Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the Moreno Valley City Council on December 5th, 2017 at 5:35 PM. Our first portion of the special presentations will be our Business Spotlight. And we have three businesses that we're very proud to present tonight. And Councilman Ulises Cabrero will be presenting the Business Spotlight.
Good evening, everyone. The first business that we're recognizing tonight is a local favorite of mine. It's actually in District 4. It's called Taqueria La Fajana. It's located at 16380 Paris Boulevard. Taqueria La Fajana offers a variety of authentic Mexican food ranging from delicious tacos, savory soups, stews, and traditional Mexican fruit beverages. They pride themselves on their homemade recipes like their daily-prepared menudo, burritos filled with a combination of ingredients of your choosing, and assortment of salsas. Taqueria La Fajana offers specials like Taco Tuesday and invites everyone to try their delicious food. Today, we recognize Taqueria La Fajana with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Taqueria La Fajana is a taste of Mexico, right here in Moreno Valley. We offer a full menu of traditional Mexican dishes such as pozole, burritos, and tacos. We also have modern favorites like carne asada fries and our renowned fried tacos. Take the bull by the horns and try our delicious homemade salsas. For friendly service and the best carne asada in Moreno Valley, come to Taqueria La Fajana, where our food is always a bullseye.
And representing the business tonight are owners Jose and Sandra Rodriguez. If you can please join me at the mic. And by the way, I only go there for the salsa, just to let you know. And I have a certificate for Jose and Sandra, as well as two DVDs with the video that you just saw. So you can download that, share it with your family and everyone. So here's the video, and then here is the certificate for you. You know, you could put that up inside of your restaurant. So if we can just take a picture and then move on, you can greet the rest of the council.
Buenas tardes a todos. Muchas gracias por esta oportunidad para nosotros, para Taqueria La Fajana. Ya que estamos comenzando, les agradecemos a todos por esta oportunidad y los esperamos ahí cuando gusten para que prueben todos nuestros... en principal nuestros tacos y pues todo lo que tenemos ahí para ustedes para ofrecerles. Muchas gracias.
And their tacos are delicious. I recommend you visit them on the weekends. I believe they have a taco special. You might want to check that out. Alrighty. The second business that we're recognizing tonight is Red Maple Pizza located at 25045 Red Maple Lane. Red Maple Pizza offers a wide variety of specialty pizzas in addition to wings, subs, fried chicken, and more. Their pizzas are handmade from scratch on the spot like their Indian vegetarian pizza made with jalapenos, cilantro, mushrooms, garlic, olives, onion, bell peppers, tomatoes, and ginger. Or their all-meat pizza made with pepperoni, chicken, ham, sausage, and Canadian bacon. Red Maple Pizza offers vegan pizza and online ordering that is available through their website. Today, we recognize Red Maple Pizza with this Business Spotlight video.
You're in the mood for pizza. You've had the rest, but now it's time for the best handmade pizza in Moreno Valley. At Red Maple Pizza, we have more pizzas than you can imagine. Pepperoni classic, loco, burger, Indian vegetarian, everything. Bacon BBQ Ranch, New York Deluxe, Chicago Style, Hawaiian luau BBQ Chicken. Wow, that really is a lot of pizzas. We also offer delicious wings and subs. It's everything you need for game night. Go sports! Red Maple Pizza, the way pizza should be.
And tonight, we have the owners Raj Sandu. If you can please join me up at the mic. And so I have the same video for you here on DVD and as well as your certificate. And let's see, would you like to say a few words?
No.
No? No? Okay. Okay. So if you'd mind if we take a picture here? Okay. The third and final business that we are recognizing tonight, also located in District 4, is Paw Perfection Pet Grooming. Disclaimer, I asked for a husky. I'm still waiting on that. I haven't received it, but no, I'm just kidding. Paw Perfection Pet Grooming is a full-service dog and cat grooming salon and boutique. They offer pickup and drop-off services, pet caretaking, great discounts, and possum specials. Paw Perfection Pet Grooming provides a trustworthy environment for clients to drop off their pets. They are contracted with Moreno Valley Shelter to groom animals ready for a new home. Today, we recognize Paw Perfection Pet Grooming with this Business Spotlight video.
Welcome to Paw Perfection, where we specialize in helping your pets look their best. We are a full-service grooming salon and boutique for cats and dogs. We offer pickup and drop-off services. At Paw Perfection, our expertly-trained staff of caretakers will treat your pet like family. Cats and dogs agree, we are paws-down, the best groomer in town. So if it's paws or claws, Paw Perfection will make you say "aw."
Okay. Tonight, we have the owner, Ms. Casey Rose. If you can please join me here at the mic. And I also have the two DVDs for you here. You can share with your friends and family and a certificate as well. Here you go. And would you like to say a few words?
I'll try.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing my small business. It means a lot and for the opportunity to be able to have all the clientele I do and their support and how much it means to me and my family. So thank you very much, and I'm so happy that we can groom for the shelter and find new homes for all those little pets as well. But yeah, stop by anytime. The shop's always open. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much to all our businesses and welcome to Moreno Valley. Let's give them another applause. Our second order of business is a presentation, and it's a recognition to our very own Valley View High School Water Polo CIF Championships. And our mayor will make that presentation.
Alright, well, this is the, I think, I want to say the best part for tonight. We're going to be recognizing our CIF champs from the water polo team. And so we would like to honor the boys' water polo team from Moreno Valley Unified School District. And we have with us tonight, we have Superintendent Kedziora. We also have school board member Susan Smith. And we have the principal Johnson. And we have a school board member, Jesus Holguin. And president of the school board, CJ Johnson. If you guys could please come up? And I just wanted to say that when I first heard about this win that they accomplished, I was so amazed. Number one, I'm a graduate from Valley View, so that just makes me really, really excited. So go Eagles! Yeah, okay? Also, this is the first in the history of Moreno Valley that they have been able to win a championship like this. So I would now like to invite the water polo team along with Coach Knowles. If you could please come up here on stage? I didn't notice there were that many. It's a lot. I just wanted to say that they've actually had immense challenges this season. Number one, I was just speaking to a parent earlier, and they were telling me that they didn't even have a pool at their high school that was functionable. So they actually had to go to Canyon Springs High School to swim there for practice. Also, they only practiced two days out of the week instead of the usual five days out of the week. As a true testament to the spirit of the team, they improvised. The students reviewed videos of previous games and analyzed the performance of the athletes. This enhanced their critical thinking skills. Further practices were held on the basketball court at Valley View High School. The student athletes and coaching staff achieved a truly remarkable feat in that the students are forced to make independent... were forced to make independent split-second decisions in the water. I also wanted to add that, again, this is the first time ever in the city of Moreno Valley, in the history of Moreno Valley School District, that they have been able to get this accomplishment. So we have two special rewards for them tonight. One is a proclamation signed by the entire city council, recognizing Valley View High School and their team for their achievement, their unrelenting spirit and resilience that led them to the victory with... And then also, we have individual certificates as well. So I wanted to make sure that each of you guys got a certificate as well from the city. And it reads, "Whereas student athletes who participate in water polo dedicate an average of eighteen hours a week to practice in addition to their regular scholastic duties, and many student athletes dedicate hours every week to practicing water polo in the offseason as well. And whereas, despite the daunting challenges that the team faced on November 11, 2017, the boys' water polo team at Valley View High School won the Division VII CIF Championship. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff commends the student athletes and coaching staff of the Valley View Water Polo Team for pursuing victory with honor in the face of adversity. The city council further encourages all residents of Moreno Valley to be mindful and emulate the undaunted determination and resilience displayed in the practice and victory by the student athletes." So Coach Knowles, would you mind saying a few words?
I just want to say thank you to all the parents that supported us. It's not easy. A lot of times, that amount of hours that they put in the pool and the weight room and the video sessions we went through, but like I said, these kids, really proud of them. They really stepped up, truly, and they faced adversity. I personally have been around water polo for fifteen years now. Never met a group of kids that worked harder with less to work with than these kids. And for them to win a CIF championship, one, was overwhelming for me. As hard as it was while I've been working, but I know these kids have stepped it up and worked twice as hard as that. So I just want to say thank you to the city and thank you to the boys for working hard.
If we could also have either President CJ Johnson or... Okay, President CJ, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I want to thank the mayor again in public, as well as the other city council people and everybody else who got together to recognize this great group that's behind me. I want you to know that we at Moreno Valley Unified are very, very proud of these young men. I had a chance to speak with them just before we started, and one of the things I found out about each one of them, they love each other. They're one team. And I found out something else about them as well. I asked them, "How did you, you know, you guys involved with water polo?" It's because of their coach. The coach actually recruited kids, and I think that's great. I'm an old-timer, and I remembered I had a classmate named Aaron Brown. You guys don't know him because he's a little bit older. But Aaron Brown was about six foot five, six foot six, and he was a student, but he never played football. His senior year, he was recruited by the coach. Well, he went on to play with the Kansas City Chiefs, and he got a Super Bowl ring. The point is, sometimes the coach is no better than the kids and the parents. So we want to thank the coach. Would you guys please give him another hand for the wonderful job that he did? This is the first time we've ever had a championship in Moreno Valley Unified. And we're going to see what else we can do to recognize those kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everybody, our principal, a wonderful principal who's the leader of this entire group.
First time ever in water polo.
Yeah, in water polo, exactly. First time ever in water polo.
And the pool is repaired.
And the pool is repaired, so... And the pool is repaired now. So thank you guys very much for being here tonight and for recognizing our great group. Thank you.
If I could just have John Orojo come up to the podium right here? Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
And I'm going to call on the next person as well. We have Nestor. We also have Apollo, actually Davis Apollo. Is it Apollo, your first name?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. I was like, okay, maybe they switched it here. We have Dylan Gonzalez. If you can please come up. We also have Daniel Hurtado. And then we have Carlos Marin. We have Moises or Moses Munoz. And then we have Ricardo Nuno. We also have Alex Perez. We also have Justice Quintero. Shane Randall. We have Ian Reinhardt or Reinhardt? Alright. We have Cole Rennevier. And we have Jake Rennevier. And I just wanted to mention, this is actually a true story. Earlier, in the early 2000s, I used to always go to this coffee shop. It was called It's a Grind. And we actually have the owner here, and she's actually the grandmother of Cole and Jake. So it's kind of funny how everything just kind of turned out together tonight. Alright. We have Nicholas Ross. And then we have, for the coaches, we have Chris Knowles? And we have one also for the assistant coach, Jake Weisenberg. And then if we could just get a group photo? And by the way, just one last thing. They actually beat Beverly Hills High School, who had a pool and was practicing. So, I mean, they were practicing too, but I mean, can you imagine? I mean, I don't know, I think this might be a movie. So this is great.
Now talk about civic pride. Congratulations once again to the Eagles, Valley View High School, and superintendent, principal, coaches, school board members, and thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. So let's give them another applause. Our third and final presentation will be presented by Mayor Gutierrez, and it'll be for the California Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Week Proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this is basically something that exists right now in the state of California and also federally as well. But we want to make sure and put special awareness this week that there is something called the California Earned Income Tax Credit to let people know to go ahead and apply through their taxes. So in conjunction with other citywide programs to help elevate the overall quality of life of the citizens of Moreno Valley, such as the New Homeless-to-Work Program and the Brush with Kindness Programs, the city council would like to proclaim the week of December 10th to December 16th as the California Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Week. If I could have Darryl Pedan with the Golden State Opportunity Foundation come up here? He's present tonight to accept the proclamation on behalf of the organization. "The California EITC is one of many resources available to Californians living in poverty to help provide the financial security that is integral to our fellow citizens in Moreno Valley to thrive. Many of the citizens who qualify for the Cal EITC and the associated resources such as free tax preparation are unaware of the resources that are there, let alone the fact that they qualify for them. The city council encourages all citizens to visit the website calitcformi.org to learn more about these resources." And so we have a proclamation for the week, and it reads, "In its first year, Cal EITC boosted the income of nearly 400,000 Californians by providing nearly $200 million in refunds. Whereas, in addition to providing economic security, Cal EITC may positively impact the overall wellness of California families, especially children. Children whose families receive a boost in income from EITC perform better in school, thereby making them more likely to finish high school, pursue higher education, and have higher earnings as adults." And I just wanted to say that we will be collaborating together to come up with a plan so that way we can promote more of these resources that are out there that people just sometimes don't apply or they don't know about it. So now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff does hereby recognize the importance of Cal EITC and declare the week of December 10th through December 16th to be Cal EITC Awareness Week. All residents of Moreno Valley are encouraged to spread the word about this important resource to those who need it most." And Mr. Pedan, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, on behalf of Cal EITC for me, we would like to thank the mayor, city council, city staff, and the city of Moreno Valley for presenting us with this proclamation and making sure that we build awareness here in the city of Moreno Valley specifically. I'd also like to thank you for your commitment to working families. That's vital here in Moreno Valley to ensure that we make sure that work pays better. One of the things that we believe in, from the perspective of our organization, Cal EITC for me, is that we believe that if you work, you deserve financial security. And so, but the issue, we know that one of the best ways to ensure financial security and make sure that work pays better is through the Earned Income Tax Credit. And that's why this effort between the city, different organizations throughout the city of Moreno Valley is so crucial to make sure that we're getting the word out and building the outreach effort. And just real quick, I mean, there's just about $2 billion that has gone unclaimed. And that's why this outreach effort is so important, because we're missing out on millions and millions of dollars coming back into the community here in Moreno Valley and back into the pockets of working families in Moreno Valley. So again, I want to thank you, and we look forward to our relationship and working together to do this outreach.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our portion of the special presentations. The regular council meeting will resume in about ten minutes. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, city as successor agency for the community redevelopment agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on December 5th, 2017 at about 6:14 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank. Thank you, Frank. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor James Bell from Grace Fellowship Ministries.
Everyone face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Father, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, first of all, we want to thank you for blessing us on this beautiful day, another day that you have made, and certainly, we want to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, Lord, for our city government, those that are here to make the decisions for this great city, and we pray that you will give them wisdom and direct them in doing the things that they should do. Bless each and every one that's in attendance on this night. We're grateful for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. As we continue to serve you, Lord, we want you to get the glory out of our lives, and we'll ever lift you up with praises. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen and amen.
Okay, thank you Pastor James Bell from Grace Fellowship Ministries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
Staff introductions, please.
Angel Miguel, Executive Assistant to Mayor and City Council.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Regina Flores, Deputy City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Ellen Brock, Community Development Director.
Joel Anavero, Chief of Police.
Mark Williams, Battalion Chief, Fire Department.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you. And we actually have two new individuals. I don't know if we, I think we might have introduced Ms. Sanchez before? Okay, so we have Michael Wolf, if you could please stand. And this is our new Public Works Director. Just a friendly reminder that the city is currently offering free Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back with the gentleman back there, if you could just wave. Okay, right there. And, again, it's free. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially to the individuals at the podium. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker. So once it gets close to three minutes, if you can please wrap up. And that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the City Council. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the podium when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. So, what that basically means is that if you have a question from the podium, we're going to go ahead and write it down, and then we'll get back to you. Our staff will actually get back to you. But we're not going to actually do it in the middle of the public comment period. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes.
Non-agenda items?
On non-agenda items, so far we have five.
Okay, go ahead and call three at a time.
Jorge Quintero, Martín Cabrera Jr., Rafael Brugueras.
Okay, and Jorge?
Good evening, Mayor. And General Public. Last Saturday, you had an event.
Just real quick, is there a way for us, for everybody else, to hear it up here?
Oh, yeah, I can go up there.
Because it's being broadcast. So she just needs another microphone. I was about to speak to you in Spanish. Okay. Pat, can you restart the time, please?
Last Saturday, you had the Christmas event.
And I congratulate you, everything was very, went very well. What I didn't like is that kids were charged $6 to go onto the rides. For a city where most people are poor? I don't think that's just, I don't think that's right. Because we had sponsors, and I think that the sponsors should have paid because it was a community event. And I think you shouldn't make a business out of people's money. It should be enough to have the sponsor money cover that. That's all I would like to add, is just a constructive criticism, because I'm not sure whose idea it was to charge. Thank you.
Gracias, Jorge. We also have Martin Cabrera Jr.
Good evening, people of Moreno Valley, Mayor, council members, Mayor Protem. So, why I'm here, I don't even know why I'm here, I'm just kidding. I'm here to speak for the people and speak for the future. The future meaning the adolescents, the children. I know, well, we have one library. And it's a, it's a, it's a good library. It's not great. I do wish to have a better library. And I know we do have another one coming up right inside the mall. And I would like information on that. I don't know, who do I need to speak to about that, about the library? And then, also, I would like more information on the new library that's supposed to be built. I know the past council meetings, there's been a lot of controversy for the marijuana, and then children smoking marijuana. And as a life coach, the reason why they are is because they don't have anything to inspire them. There, I mean, there is programs here, but for the people, the adolescents, the high schoolers, we need to attract their attention, right? And so, the, I mean, the education, the formal education, and alternative education in libraries, having people, having kids read. I mean, I know we can't force them to read, but giving them something that they're actually passionate about. Something to really inspire them and to give them excitement. I didn't go to school, not university, but I did attend seminars. And for the past two, three years, I've been reading a lot of psychology, self-help, emotional mastery, things of that sort. And these kids need to be educated on their emotions. They're human beings, we're very radical animals. And if we don't control our emotions, also up in the, whenever you're elected official, if you let your emotions get a hold of you, that dictates your actions, and what you're going to vote on, or what you're going to vote against, when it's not even, it couldn't even be rational. And so, what's going on with all this marijuana, the problem isn't the marijuana. The problem is having stuff to inspire these kids. And they're a part of social conditioning. Their friends are doing this, if their friend is wearing this, they're going to want to wear it to be a part of it, and not to be outcast, right? And so, the future, I mean, we gotta, we gotta look at that. And one would consider themselves righteous, wise. They would have clarity steadfast, right? And we need to be that example.
Thank you, Martin.
As their leaders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
We have Rafael Brugueras.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff.
Followed by Jose.
Residents and our guests tonight. Hoping that the City of Moreno Valley remembers those that are up there in Ventura County right now, going through torture and pain, losing their property, their animals, and I'm hoping they don't lose life tonight, because it's pretty mean to fire up there. The winds are pretty wicked. I mean, when we watch it, when I watch it on the news live, it's pretty terrible. So I hope that tonight when we close, that we remember those up there, and thought and prayer. The second thing I want to talk about that happened last Wednesday in Temecula, in the Walmart, the stabbing of the young man. I got to meet the mother Sunday in person. The young man was only 19 years old. He died in vain. He died because someone's emotion got the best of them. They call it road rage, an excuse to probably get a less sentence because of the emotions that someone had over someone not having a little bit more patience. The young man was waiting for someone to cross on the stop sign, and the person behind him was hawking him. Okay, and then when they split up in the parking lot, the suspect went over to the young man and grabbed him by the throat. And the young man was fighting for his life and pulled his hand away. And the suspect took a knife out of his pocket and stabbed him in the chest. And he died in the car with his girlfriend in his hands. I got to meet the mother. I tell you why I get emotional. Because my nephew died the same way in New York in 1998, when he was going to the subway. Somebody stabbed him in the chest and cut his artery over emotions. I'm hoping that the City of Moreno Valley will have peace and walk away from things like that. There are some things in this country, in this world, in this city, that we don't need to fight about. Walk away. You don't need to be bad and tough. You can walk away. And if something happens because they cross the street while you cross the street, then you have the right to defend yourself. But you don't need to die like that at 19. No one, at no age, you should have seen the mother Sunday. It was a blessing to be with her, to pray with her. And the thing is that she has four other children. Keep them in prayer because their funeral is this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you Rafael. Next three speakers are Jose Chavez, Roy Blackard, and Hector Marin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councils, and all of the staff of Moreno Valley. I have a long time I never see these faces, but, so I still remind in my brain, not in my eye, in my brain. I was present the other day over here, and I'm still thinking about it, who's the smartest people was be taking action to sell marijuana over here in Moreno Valley? I saw the poor guy right there in the parking lot. That poor guy was sleeping on the ground. He was knocked down, flying in the sky. And according to that, you guys want to do the same thing. You guys are in process aborting to be, have a storage for solar marijuana. Let me tell you. So if you guys, all the firemen, they passing, and they started to do that deal next year, you better start to put all your stuff in your pocket next election. Bye-bye, you guys, everybody. It's enough. And sometime I saw it, I saw it, people over here in our city, they are talking regardless of the other city, like example, the poor man dying in a Walmart up there. But they never shoot, they never say anything what the guy got shooting right there in the HICAD. A eucalyptus, four officers. They put the guy in the trunk like animal, like a cow, like a pig, like a dog, and take it to survive. Come on, give me a break, I'm not born yesterday, man. When I saw the poor guy, that guy is already pass away. What happened is they tried to escape. The problem we do have in our city. Nobody, nobody blind, because I was here. The whole United States, even in the United States. I have a lot of friends up there. So let me tell you, don't try to cover the eye with one finger, because it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. When we have a new personnel up here in the Moreno Valley city, sitting right there in the front of my face, they promised to me they're going to take care of the street, the road I was living for. I was collecting a lot of signatures and signing them up and everything, request to fix the street. I guess what? Promise like any other political man. Thank you. I love you, you guys, but in that particular chair, for no one of those is going to be in there no more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Next speaker is Roy Blackard, followed by Hector.
Just to pick up on Rafael said, I can tell you, it's very difficult to even cover those situations. And I hope in the future, people will, when they find themselves in a tough situation like that, step back, take a deep breath, and think about things. But, I was reading Kevin Jeffries, Supervisor Kevin Jeffries' latest newsletter, and he had a very interesting statistic. It was about housing in the unincorporated areas of Riverside County. And he had a statistic that, and he had the staff down there in Riverside County run through the numbers. And for every $1,029 of tax generation, for every household in the unincorporated area, it costs $1,490 in services. That's 30% plus upside down, every household causes to the treasury of the county of Riverside. I would imagine that number might even be more in a city like Moreno Valley, because we have more demands on services and we provide more. This has been brought to light because development and things have been brought up in the city, and there's some new projects coming up. But one thing I would like to reiterate, and you can maybe check this out with one of Kevin Jeffries staffer, who lives here, Tom Ketchum. One of your, the two, and probably the only ones that are on the plus side, are warehouses and very high-end housing. Warehouses being almost a two to one on the plus side. So when you're considering developments in the community, and you're considering what to bring in here, and all the rhetoric that goes on, consider what's going to make your city the best. And what's going to provide the money to provide the services that everybody expects and wants. Better streets, more police officers, better fire protection, better schools, and on down the line. That's only going to happen if you concentrate and bring in the things in your community that are going to put that money in there. Money doesn't rain out of the sky, and there is nothing for free. Somewhere, somebody has to pay for it. I mean, I know Christmas is coming up, but in reality, there is no Santa Claus, even though Mr. Marquez might look like one. But, you know, really, you know, and I hope you would consider that, because I know there's a project coming up on the ranks. And it's some of those things, and when you're looking at that, and when we're making these decisions, once you do that, because Moreno Valley has been on the wrong side of this, with high-density developments that have not paid off, and it has hurt this community, and I hope one day we will turn this around.
Thank you, Roy. Next person is Hector Marin. And I just wanted to mention that Hector is also on the Emergent Leaders Council as well.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, as Mayor, as Mayor Gutierrez says, um, I'm in the, also in the Emergent Leaders Council. And the experience of being in there, it was one of wonderful, wonderful experiences since we did high school outreaches much more recently. Um, I recently went with Councilman Cabrera's forty's outreaches for our youth to actually speak on what they want. And on their wants and their needs that they want around the city. When you talk to them, they actually care for Moreno Valley and they actually love everything about Moreno Valley. Even though that there might be a notion that they may not, they do love Moreno Valley and they do wanna see our community thrive. And with that, the one thing that I kept on seeing or hearing about the most that they want is that they want a skate park, a much more better skate park accessible so they can be, um, so they can just roam around, be with their friends, engage in social activity. And on top of that, they also want more green in our area. And that's how, something that I highly agree with too because, um, I, if Moreno Valley, I know it's a desert, but I believe that we need to actually incorporate community gardens or much more greenery areas where we can make Moreno Valley look beautiful as it is, plant more trees also. And on top of those comments also, um, they want to see more parks. More parks is a necessity too. And they just want to see our community thrive. And I just want to let the council know that, and the community of Moreno Valley as well, that we should listen to our youth much more. And we should also educate them and engage them more in these activities that we have recently engaged in such as a high school outreach. I believe that if the councilmen did this respectively, as Councilman Cabrera has done, follow this example, I believe that this will create a wave of unity amongst our community as well. Um, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Hector.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We also, um, okay, that's it.
No more speakers.
Would any council members like to make the reports or comments at this time? Okay, we are now moving on to, um, the joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed, listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine, non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, community services district, city successor agency, for the community redevelopment agency, housing authority, or the board of library trustee requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. So we'll go ahead and start with any council items for discussion or removal. Go to Councilmember Gaiba.
Yeah, I just wanna pull A twenty-three for a, a report. A twenty-five for a report. And then A thirty-three for a separate vote.
So A twenty-three and A twenty-five for reports, and then you said A thirty-three?
Yes.
For separate.
Separate vote, yes, please.
Okay. Any other requests? Okay. And I just want to really quick, find out which one this one was. Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with A twenty-three. Councilmember Gaiba? Or do you just want a report?
Yeah, I'd like the report on that and, 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 um, the explanation of the sixty Redlands Boulevard Interchange Project Study. Uh, so that the public knows, few people asked about it, so it's an opportunity for them to hear exactly what the study was entailed.
Okay. Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm gonna bring up our senior engineer, Marge, to give that report.
Okay.
Hi, Marge.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The report before you tonight is a report to approve the sixty Redlands Interchange Project Study Report. This is a project study report that was completed last year. And, uh, the report basically is the first stage of the Caltrans city process to memorialize the studies that have been done for the Redlands Interchange. And so, the purpose of the report, and the purpose of this action tonight is to, um, several things, is to memorialize the efforts so that we have a document on file that we can use for several reasons. Uh, one of them is for grant applications for interchange, for this interchange in the future. Uh, another one is to include it in any of the planning and the transportation efforts that we have coming up. Uh, another option is for, uh, when developments come in, it gives us the ability to point to something that's been studied and give us a, you know, some plans for improvements. And then it also, like I said, it also improves our chances for grant funding. If you have something on file that shows you're making progress, then it's an important component of your overall plan. And it increases our standing when we go ahead and apply for outside grants. And so the action tonight is just to approve the report. It's an attachment to the, to the staff report. And with that, if there's any questions.
Councilmember Marquez.
Hi. This, this study, um, how long does it stay on record? How many years of, do we, do we keep them on record or there's no, um, time limit on it?
The, what would stay on the record is the item for approval tonight. And unless we rescind that or revise it with something updated, then it would stay on as long as the approved council minutes would be in effect.
That's all right, thank you.
Marge, are we still working on the Moreno Beach widening? Uh, I mean, it's been widened, but the on and off ramps have, are they in the, are they in the, uh, the Tump field for that to get done? And is there any record of when we're going to begin to do that at all? I know it's not Redlands, but when you look down the highway, the Redlands comes after Moreno Beach and we already widened it, I believe.
Yeah, the sixty Moreno Beach Interchange, we completed construction on the eastbound ramps in two thousand and thirteen. The remaining portion, which is widening the bridge and reconfiguring the ramps on the north side, we have an approved environmental document on record, um, that is pending any funding. And we actually, uh, use that interchange quite a bit when we apply for projects. Um, it is, it is on the Tump network. The bridge is in the Tump plan and the interchange is on the Tump network.
Thank you, Marge.
Okay, we have A twenty-five. Thank you, Marge. And this is with, uh, Public Works, I believe, as well. Let me see.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a developer impact fee agreement. Uh, and I'll have our engineering division manager, Michael Lloyd, give a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Uh, before I begin, were there any specific questions or were you just looking for a report?
Uh, just, uh, very quickly, this, this concerns the Prologis project out on eucalyptus, I'm quite sure. I, I think what the curiosity was with a lot of people, um, they probably don't really understand the DIF fee program. And as I went through all the pages, the DIF fees and what it, and what it covers. So the public understands that these fees are being used to, um, help our city in many, many ways. So, um, I was just going through them and, and I thought maybe it'd be okay if you guys explained the DIF fees and how they come up with all of these different fees they have to pay and, and, uh, and what they do really cover. But it's a good, if the people got a chance to read it and look at, they see all the improvement that come from the DIF fee program, which is probably about five million dollars if I'm correct, Mr. Wolf, something like that for this project.
Yeah, I have to ask Mr. Lloyd that question.
Sure, so just very general, our, our DIF program is in place to collect fees from our developers. Uh, the fees go towards streets, uh, parks, uh, city, uh, fi, uh, police, fire, uh, city yard. So it covers a lot of categories. Uh, specific to this item, A twenty-five is a credit agreement which is allowable per our municipal code. And that credit agreement is allowable when the developer constructs, uh, actual street improvements, which this project will be constructing eucalyptus, uh, to the east of the auto mall. And so therefore, um, following city policy, they're eligible for a credit, uh, which is outlined in the staff report.
Yeah, that's short, but thank you.
Okay.
I would, I would encourage the public, if they get a chance, to read the full report on it and the, and all of the items that the DIF fees do cover. It's a very nice package that Prologis is having to do on behalf of the city to, for those improvements and grades. In the water sewer, the whole nine yards, so. But just something to, to bring up that the people should probably really understand, that's worth our while. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. A thirty-one is the request to purchase exercise equipment, uh, report, is that, that's, yes. Hit report of police department, but first, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I have, uh, one question.
Okay.
And then go to staff, Tom or Michelle. This money that we're, that we're speaking about replacing this equipment, can you explain to the public where's this money coming from and what it can only be used for?
Councilman, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and answer that question. Uh, these are funds that are seized from, uh, people who are engaged in criminal activity of various types, typically, uh, large-scale drug dealing. Um, i- in this particular case, uh, the majority of the money that is in our, um, asset forfeiture account is due to one particular, uh, investigation that we conducted in two thousand and thirteen, the very end of two thousand and thirteen, uh, wherein we seized three million dollars in cash. Uh, that money was coming, uh, west, uh, after drugs went east. In exchange for those drugs, the money was coming back, uh, to go to a, a drug trafficking organization. We intercepted it, uh, with the help of several other agencies, including the federal government and, um, and of course, uh, the district attorney's office and so forth. There is no way to explain why someone who makes forty thousand dollars a year is driving down the road with three million dollars' worth of cash stuffed into their gas tanks on their big rig truck. And so since they couldn't explain that and they didn't come and take any affirmative action to try to, uh, dispute the fact that it was ill-gotten gains, we seized it. Uh, each participating agency in those, uh, asset forfeiture proceedings gets a portion of that. The district attorney gets a portion because they have to do the civil litigation to seize those funds. We, as the primary agency, got the lion's share of those funds and that is what is currently populating our, uh, asset forfeiture account. We can only use asset forfeiture funds for frontline law enforcement purposes. So for instance, the front lobby of the Moreno Valley Police Department, a building that belongs to the city of Moreno Valley, we hardened that target a couple of years ago because we have had a number of shootings in police stations across the country. And we wanted to be, uh, to protect our staff and our, and our visitors that come into the police department. And we were able to spend, uh, quite a bit of those funds to, uh, uh, place ballistic, uh, or, or bullet-resistant materials throughout the front lobby and change that, make it safer for our staff and safer for the public. We can use those things, we cannot use them to supplant salaries, but we can use them for other things that, uh, benefit, uh, frontline law enforcement activity. And in this case, uh, the health and welfare of the officers who are out there on the street every day, trying to stay healthy and trying to take care of the city, these items would qualify for that and we've already checked with, uh, the people who regulate that and they've confirmed that that is a legitimate expenditure of these funds.
Then it can't be, be used for other public agencies?
No, only for law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement only.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And, uh, my question actually is on, on that item as well. Just, uh, what type of, um, because I was reading the staff report and it's just, uh, very general. Um, it just says cardiovascular equipment, so is it treadmills, is it ellipticals?
It's replacing, uh, some of the existing equipment that is, uh, outdated, obsolete or broken beyond repair. Some of these items, uh, are no longer serviceable. They don't make parts for them anymore. Uh, basically, it's time for them to be surplus and replaced. Uh, we only have two treadmills in the, uh, in the locker room and, you know, with two hundred and thirty employees and plus the fire department and anybody from the, any of the city employees are able to go in there and use that as well. They get used on a regular basis and, uh, it's time to replace them. I believe we are.
It's just replacement.
Well, and I believe we are place, uh, replacing a, uh, a stationary bicycle that doesn't get used with an elliptical-type machine. I could be mis, uh, mistaken on that, but it's a different machine than what is in there. Uh, but it's more, uh, it's a more modern, uh, exercise tool.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
All right.
I don't know for the specifics, uh, two treadmills, one elliptical and one rowing machine.
Thank you. That's a, yeah, okay. All right, um. And we do have, um, public comments on the consent items, other than the separate action items. So Madam Clerk, can you please, uh, name the speakers?
Bee, I don't wanna mispronounce his last name, and Rafael Brugeras.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, uh, Tom Bright Cruz with Polaris Development Team. Just here tonight to, uh, say and tell everybody how we appreciate the efforts that have been put forth by the city staff in all of the departments to assist us with moving this forward. We have a tenant and our obligation is to have them housed out there, uh, by October, November. So staff, uh, headed by Mike Lee and Michelle Patterson have been doing an exceptional job in, uh, shepherding things once we get it into the city. And we just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents and our guests. Um, the consent, the consent calendar to me was pretty heavy this week. There's several millions of dollars that we're going to approve tonight. I mean, several million. And I already counted three million and just in three numbers, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, that alone. And, uh, what, what, what took a little time for me to get past it was twenty-one on all the vehicles that we are purchasing. And that alone is two-point-five million dollars that is going to be approved tonight. And, um, and I was going through the whole thing and I was wondering why we're spending all this money and, um, and adding it up. And, um, as a, as a, as a resident, if you only look at the agenda, it can trick you. You gotta go to the packet. So as I was waiting for my, uh, for my download, because, I mean, it took a while because there's a lot tonight, I mean, a lot. And, um, I wanna thank the staff, but I wanna thank the mayor and the council members for giving the staff the privilege to go outside our city boundary to get the best deals. Because that's what they did here. When you look at all the trucks and all the vehicles they're purchasing for two and a half million dollars, two-point-five million dollars, that's pretty cheap. You know, and they did a great job. And, uh, that approval did a great thing for the city, saved a lot of money. I mean, truly, when you really sit down and study of all the things that, I mean, I couldn't even buy a truck, that's forty thousand dollars just for me alone. So think about that. Uh, next time, maybe they'll add me to their deal, maybe some of us can save some money. I mean, because they did a great job. But what caught my eye, because at the end of everything, I looked to see what kind of fiscal impact is gonna do either some good or some harm in our city. And that's where I base what I look at. And I'm glad to look at the fiscal impact and to see that this money, through the staff's work, how they save our nickel dimes and quarters, and they add up to this kind of money in a fund. This is called a capital equipment replacement fund. This is the things that I like about my staff in my city. They take the time to look out for my interests and your interests, Mayor and council members, because you also live here and you pay taxes just like I do. And I'm deeply grateful for their hard work. And I wanted to make this point tonight because we can't let something good without being giving, um, recognition. I wanna thank our city mayor, our assistants, all the staff for making it possible for us to save money and to have safety for our crew that work for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Rafael. Really appreciate, uh, those words. We're gonna go to, I entertain, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and, uh, make a motion, entertain a motion to approve excluding items A thirty-three for separate action.
I'll move it.
Motion by, um, Councilmember Gaiba, second by Mayor Protem Baca. All right, please vote. And, uh, the item that was pulled, which is A thirty-three, uh, for section F, we're gonna go ahead and hear that item now. Uh, so report to city clerk's office.
Good evening. This is, uh, an appointment from the mayor to the senior board and two appointments to the Traffic and Safety Commission. All the applicants have passed their backgrounds and, um, are ready to serve. If you have any other questions, I can answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gaiba, your council questions of staff?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, just, I'll ask this question, then I'll, uh, respond to my deliberations. Is, are these our official application forms?
Yes, sir.
Uh, they, these looked a little different from the Emerging Leaders Council application forms. But these are-
Those are different because they're youth, most, for, um-
But these are our official ones, and we use these to screen our applicants, am I correct? And to see if they're, they're, um-
Well, that's the information they provide when they first submit, and then they, when they go through backgrounds, they provide.
So, just like any application, if it's not complete or filled in properly, they, they're not necessarily, um, recommended for, or they shouldn't be recommended? It's nothing bad or anything?
Well, uh, as a, as the city clerk's office, I intake all the applications and I provide them to the appointing body.
I'll make my final response like last time.
All right, anybody else? Any public comments, Madam Clerk, on this item?
None.
Okay, we'll move on to deliberation. Okay, Councilmember Guyva?
Hey, thanks. Just like last time, I just want to make, uh, my point clear that on the back of the applications of both of those that were selected for Traffic Safety Commission, it says attendance of at least one meeting is required prior to the appointment, and neither one of them have attended any meetings. So, if this is our official application and it's required, just like last time I brought it up, I have no problems, but they should be filling them out properly, and we should be acknowledging them properly, because others have, as I have looked at, have been doing them properly. So, all my comments I have to say, and I, I would like to take them separate votes because I don't have a problem with Senior Citizens Advisory Board, she filled it out properly. But the two are not. But if you want to take it as one vote, I'll just put my vote on the one. They're not, they're not, they're not proper.
Okay, thank you. So, eight thirty, seeing there's no more, I'll go ahead and close deliberation, and-
I'll make a motion that we approve item eight thirty-three?
The slate, yeah, okay. Okay, second by Councilmember Cabrera, uh, motion by Mayor Protembaka. Okay, please vote. Okay, and it's approved, uh, four ayes and one no. Uh, I would like to, uh, have Sandra, if you can, um, Davenport, if you could please stand, just to be recognized, I know you're, so she is our new, uh, Senior Citizens Advisory Board member. Congratulations. All right, and we're gonna go ahead and move back to E, which is public hearings. Uh, questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual. Uh, tonight, there will be three minutes, and must pertain to the subject matter under consideration. Uh, public hearing for adoption of resolution determining that the real property is surplus and authorizing the sale of the parcel, APN four-seven-one dash two-nine-zero dash zero-one-seven for private use. And this is, again, E one, report from Public Works, Michael Wolf.
Good evening, and mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, thank you. Uh, that is correct, we are talking tonight, a public hearing for disposition of real property. So, city-owned, this is a city-owned parcel, and we have a map up on the screen there that was acquired as part of the Richie Vista Drive roadway alignment project. Uh, the roadway alignment project is completed, and the property is no longer needed for public purposes. So, staff recommends that the project be identified as a surplus property, and then follow the Government Code Section for disposition of the properties outlined in the staff report. So, therefore, we're recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing, and then absent any compelling testimony, otherwise, we would adopt the resolution and authorize staff to sell the property per the applicable code sections in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, available to answer any questions. I also have staff available for any detailed questions.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, all right, any council questions of staff? Okay, so we have, uh, Councilmember Marquez, go ahead and ask your questions.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Do we anticipate any problems with this partial to be sold to anyone? Uh, for anybody from staff that can answer that?
Councilmember, I, so currently, we have an appraisal value, uh, it has a, a zone, it's zoned already. Uh, the, the steps would be that it would be surplus properties would be offered to, uh, agencies first, and then if no agencies are accepting of that or make an offer, then it would be offered as a, open to the public. So, we would see that process play out through that public, public, um, um, bid process.
And do we have utilities going out to that area? Do you know, um, water, electricity?
Actually, I can ask one of the staff members, uh, if we have it in the, uh, the roadway system. Uh, this, um, bring our capital division manager here, Henry, up.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, um, Mayor Protem and city council member. My name is Henry Ngo, Capital Project Division Manager. To answer your question, there's a resident house around the area, and currently, they have electricity served to that area, and some of the houses are living on septic tank, and, uh, the rest of the property owned by a private, uh, owner, and there's a lot of chain that private, that property owner can, uh, anticipate in, uh, purchasing this property. But because we have to po- follow the procedure, first, we offer to public agency. If any public agency, uh, have interest in the property, we go ahead to, uh, make a, uh, negotiation, and after that, if there's no interest, we open to public sale. Uh, it's, uh, do I answer your question?
Y- y- yeah, you, you have, but, um, hate using that word, but.
Thank you.
Do we have, um, how would I want to put it? Does the city have any interest in that property where we can add maybe a park, um, something like that? Recreational, anything like that before, um, we, we sell it off?
Um, the list of the public agency that we're going to send, uh, a letter to, including park, uh, and community, and also other, um, public agency like, uh, Water Mucho District. We also, uh, send letter to, um, Edison and owns, owns other agency. Whoever have interest can give us, uh, an offer, and then we consider.
But just the city itself, if they want to keep-
Asking about the city, right?
Yeah, the city, just the city of Moreno Valley.
City Moreno Valley is one of the agency that we, we sent the letter to.
So, we're actually selling it to ourselves?
Uh, there's a, a, a consideration that we have to make, and then, uh, that will be discussed later on during the process.
Councilmember, if I may, just to add a little addition to that. When we look at Moreno Valley Utility, we look at the parks, that's under the Community Services District, and then the city, they're actually three separate legal entities, and so, we could release it from the city and allow one of those entities to purchase it. Once we go through this process, we'll examine it, we'll look at it at parks if they wish to acquire it, or if MVU wishes to acquire it. So, that'll be part of the next step before we release it to the public for purchase, purchase.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that part. We own the, we, we own the property, and then we're gonna saddle it back to ourselves. But I understand now there's a process that has to go through. Is it government red tape, is that what it's called?
Separate buckets of money, so.
Same money where it's coming from, but I, I understand that. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Guyva?
Oh, thank you, appreciate you turning my mic back on. It's just a curiosity question, either it's a typo, or there's something that I don't quite understand, it's very confusing. The second paragraph of the discussion, or in the way the language is put, so I'm just looking for some clarification, because the city of Moreno Valley was incorporated in eighty-four. So, I'm having a hard time understanding how the parcel, uh, was dedicated, uh, in nineteen sixty-six to the city of Moreno Valley, so. I, I know it's probably either a language issue, or I, it had to have been county land at the time, you know, so.
It was dedicated to the county, Councilmember Guyva.
Yeah, but the language doesn't say that, that's what I'm trying to say. So, I just wanted some clarity in, in this official document. It implies that the city, it was dedicated to the city in nineteen sixty-six. So, it would have actually been dedicated to the city after it got incorporated, not in nineteen sixty-six. So, you may want to make an adjustment to that, or at least verbally, I'm doing that for the public's sake right now. So, it just caught my eye when I was reading the report, thanks.
And any, uh, public comments, uh, Madam Clerk on the side of? Actually, let me open the hearing really quick, and then, any, uh, public testimony?
None.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close it. We'll go to deliberation. Okay, I'll go ahead and close deliberation. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number one through three.
So moved.
Marquez, um, motion, second, uh, second by Guyva. All right, please vote. And it passes five-zero. We move on to item E two, which is public hearing for one national pollutant discharge elimination system mail ballot proceeding. Report of Public Works, and then-
Yes, sir, uh, we'll have our special pro- our special district division manager, Candace Castle, give that report.
Good evening, Candace.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Uh, Candace Castle, Special District's Division Manager. This item is a public hearing to add two parcels into the city's MPDS funding program. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. The property owner has been approved to construct a hundred-and-six-room hotel north of Yukon Leptis Avenue, just east of Day Street. The city has approved the proj- the project, provided it pays the increased costs the city will incur for the MPDS program. The property owner has requested the city collect the funding by applying a parcel charge on their property tax bill. Before the city can do so, however, the city must first conduct a property owner mail ballot proceeding. And after the city conducts a public hearing, the city clerk can open and count the ballot. If the property owner approves the ballot, the parcel charge will be applied to the tax bill of only the parcels identified on the ballot and will not impact any other property. Staff respectfully request the city council conduct a public hearing, and upon its close, direct the city clerk to count the ballot and announce the results. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Candace. All right, any council questions of staff? Now, I'm gonna open the hearing. Madam Clerk, any public testimony?
None.
Okay, hearing closed. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number two, moved by, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Marquez. Cabrera and Marquez, please vote. Okay, and it's approved, uh, five-zero. We're gonna move on to item general business, which is G one, Momentum Moval.
One second, Honorable Mayor.
We still need to finish.
Sorry, we have to count. Yeah, okay.
We, and there are other motions following, assuming the, uh, ballot passes.
Are there a lot of ballots?
Just one, and the vote is yes, the weight is two.
Okay, all right, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations three to five.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protembaka, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. Route five-zero, and now we'll move on to G one, which is Momentum Moval, status update on strategic plan. Report to city manager.
Thank you, mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to provide another update on the Momentum Moval strategic plan. Uh, since the plan was adopted last year, this is my fifth formal, uh, status update to the council and the public, and we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, provide the update and frankly brag about the, uh, the hard work that, uh, the staff is doing on behalf of the council's direction. Each of the one-hundred-and-sixty-four initiatives or action items that are included in the strategic plan, uh, as you know, was assigned a timeframe. This was never intended to be a strategic plan that just sat on a shelf and collected dust. Uh, the, uh, there are deadlines for each one of these one-hundred-and-sixty-four action items, as you know. Uh, this is a reminder of the priorities that, uh, the council included in the strategic plan as a guide. Staff is focusing efforts currently on thoroughly implementing all the new program services and projects that commence with the strategic plan, as well as, as addressing the remaining longer-term elements in Momentum Moval. In September, when I provided you with the one-year update, uh, with regard to our status, I, uh, let you know that of the, uh, one-year initiatives or action items that staff had successfully completed or achieved ninety-five percent of those one-year, uh, action items, so I'm, uh, pleased to brag a little bit about that as well. But tonight, we're focusing on, uh, things that have happened since the last update. With regard to the economic development priority, uh, as you know, the Development Services Center for Excellence continues to be a priority and something that, uh, a number of our departments focus on. Most recently, the Simplicity Kiosk was added to the city lobby, uh, right there by the concierge desk. This is a, uh, an opportunity for people to come into city hall. There's just a ton of data available on that kiosk, um, the status of code enforcement cases, parcel information, building inspection, um, statuses as well. Uh, so we're pleased to offer that to our residents, and also, uh, wanted to show you this poster that, uh, was prepared in-house, uh, highlighting the different elements of the Center for Excellence, and, um, it just, uh, kudos to, to Alan Brock and the graphics staff, uh, for putting that together. Actually, I think this one was, uh, done inter, uh, within the department. I don't think it even went to the media team, so, uh, thank you for that. Determining the highest and best use of the city's parcel at Nason and Alessandro is also an important part of your strategic plan, as well as explore, exploration of the urban village concept on that parcel. As you know, the city was awarded, uh, a grant by Southern California Association of Govern- Governments, or SCAG, uh, to prepare the Nason Corridor Study. We've been, this was actually a, I believe it was a year-one initiative, so it's one of the few that we didn't get done in the first year, uh, frankly, because we're at the mercy of SCAG. Uh, since this is free money that we're using, uh, for what is really the second phase of the Nason Corridor Study, uh, we've been, uh, waiting for them, uh, at SCAG to select a consultant and award that. They did that in November, so we're gonna work, uh, closely with that consultant to try to get this done as soon as possible. Really, that second phase of the, the corridor study is essentially a town center feasibility study to see if the, um, concept of the village center or town center is viable and marketable at that location. So, we'll keep you posted on the progress, uh, with regard to that. Another key element of your strategic plan is the update of the general plan. This is something that we, uh, I know all of you are very interested in, and, uh, certainly, we're, we're getting some interest from the public as well as to the progress on that. There are a number of initiatives in Momentum Moval, uh, specific to the general plan update. The first one was forming a working group of key city staff from a number of different departments. Uh, what they were tasked with last year was re- reviewing the existing general plan, page by page by page, and as you know, it's, it's, uh, a quite, uh, a comprehensive and large document, and identifying those items, um, that they felt needed, uh, further review and, uh, and updating. Uh, that has been done. The working group also put together a scope of work, um, for the consultant, to, to, uh, to include in the request for proposals for a consultant selection to help us, uh, continue to move this initiative along. That, that has been done, the request for proposals was bid, and, uh, today, uh, city staff actually did the interviews for the consultants they had proposed. So, on January second, we'll be bringing the award, uh, for that, uh, consultant agreement to you for, um, for approval. Something I'd like to say about the general plan as well, uh, your last general plan update for the city of Moreno Valley took ten years. Uh, it was started in nineteen ninety-six and wasn't completed till two thousand and six. Just fits and starts, uh, council changing out, staff changing out. That will not happen this time. Uh, you put this in your strategic plan, it has deadlines, we are on schedule to get it done. Uh, you made sure we're gonna get it done because you fully funded it, uh, one-point-seven- You made sure we're gonna get it done because you fully funded it. $1.75 million. You've committed to it already. So I just want you to know that we will be making the, meeting all the milestones and making the deadlines for this initiative. Moving on to the public safety priority, increasing public trust by building our community-oriented policing programs was one of your initiatives. We're pleased to say that Moreno Valley Police Department has enhanced the Officer Friendly Program. It's been so successful. That's the deputy that's assigned to our business district and like the old days, walking, putting a lot of shoe leather to work there, going business to business. We had Officer Friendly, that deputy out there four days. The police department has added another deputy. So we have a full seven-day Officer Friendly Program going in the business district. So we thank the Moreno Valley Police Department for that. There are a number of initiatives in the strategic plan related to addressing homelessness. I'm pleased to give you an update tonight on your initiative for the Homeless to Work Program. That is something, as you remember, that you approved back in September. We've been waiting for the green light from the federal government since we are using federal funds for that. And I really want to give a shout-out to Marshall Ironman and his team for bird-dogging this and trying to get it done as quickly as possible. And also to Lieutenants Kane, David and Kelly at the Salvation Army. They've worked hard. They've got just about everything in place. Staff met with Waste Management, who is one of our partners and is generously donating the equipment for the cleanups that the homeless will be using when they're out in the field. So the federal government has finally approved the city's annual action plan. We're completing the final setup of the Homeless to Work Program. The city held meetings with Waste Management, as I indicated. Salvation Army's legal group has reviewed the contract and we're expecting signed contracts back this week. Based on the receipt of those contracts, we hope that this Homeless to Work Program will be running by December 15th. So that's 10 short days from now. So we're excited about that and we appreciate the opportunity to bring this to the city. And just wanted to acknowledge that this is a program that Mayor Gutierrez brought forward to staff to take a look at prior to bringing it to you. So thank you for that. This is something I believe you ran across at the US Conference of Mayors last year. I know it's been a long time coming, so 10 more days. We appreciate your patience. Bringing another key element of the City Council's Momentum Moval strategic vision to reality. The grand opening celebration of the first branch library in the city's history is scheduled for Friday, December 21st at 10 o'clock AM. The 5,000-square-foot branch library is, as you well know, located at Moreno Valley Mall. And we're so excited to share this with the community and look forward to seeing everybody out there again December 21st at 10 a.m. Infrastructure, I know, is very important to all of you. It's one of your top six priorities in the strategic plan. One of your initiatives, 4.3.3, specifically directs resources to complete slurry seal maintenance projects on city roadways. As you remember, you're directing use of $1.2 million that is coming to the city in revenue thanks to Senate Bill 1, which is the gas tax revenue. That's allowing the city to jump-start this important program. The citywide slurry projects include a total of 105 streets spread out throughout the city. So thank you for your focus and your direction on how to use those funds. In a related, somewhat related program, related to infrastructure at least, in your beautification, community engagement, and quality of life priority, that initiative was full implementation of the Keep Moreno Valley Beautiful Program. I wanted to give you an update on these. You see the signs throughout the city. I hope you noticed them. I really appreciate. Those were designed by our in-house graphics team and they really do pop out in the community as you're driving by in your vehicles. An update with regard to that on the Adopt a Road Program. We currently have one group fully enrolled in that program and that is the city's very own Emerging Leaders Council. So we thank the council members for their leadership in helping to get that group signed up. We do have seven different groups interested in the Adopt a Road Program currently with regard to the Sponsor a Street. And as you'll remember, the difference is Adopt a Road, you do that work yourself. Sponsor a Street, you pay and we contract that out and somebody else does the work. So the Sponsor a Street Program, we currently have one business enrolled. That's Don's Auto Center, so we want to give a shout-out to them as well. We have one business pending with regard to their sponsorship and we have 15 that have indicated interest. So any businesses, service groups, that are individuals that are interested in either of these programs, they can call the Solid Waste and Recycling Program at 413-3109. And lastly, I wanted to give you an update. This initiative with regard to quality of life and community engagement, but also has to do with your youth programs initiative as well. This was to implement a new and improved Parks and Community Services website that would provide interactive and user-friendly applications. I am proud to announce that the ActiveNet New Software Program in Parks and Community Services was launched successfully last Friday. We've already had residents that are using that online registration program. And we will, we kinda did a soft launch of that, so we'll really hit the promotion of that. And it's very interactive, much easier to use. So I want to thank Mel Alonso, the Director of Parks and Community Services, and his team for getting that done on time as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Great job. Thank you. I just wanted to see if there's any, let me go back to the other screen. And this is more of a receiving file, right? We're not voting on this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. But any questions of staff? Actually, questions to staff? Any public comments on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Tom Gerrell Senior and Rafael Burguerras.
Okay. Good evening, Tom.
Evening Mayor, thank you. Tom Gerrell, speaking on behalf of myself and a little bit on behalf of the Sundance Center where I spent a bit of time. Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Tem Baca, council members, members of staff and the public, thank you for the opportunity to address this report. First of all, I want to compliment the City Manager and the staff. It sounds like they're digging in and, you know, charging hard on it. And I want to give some kudos. First of all, it's a great time to be doing our general plan. It is a patchwork quilt and it's long overdue. And she's dead right about it taking too long. I was on the first general plan committee and that took about almost four years to get it done. It's ridiculous. And in a fast-growing city, it should have been done in 18 months. And no reason it shouldn't have been, but it is what it is. I want to give some kudos to that Officer Friendly Program. That was a brilliant concept. It's working great. I'm a personal benefactor at the Sundance Center. Our tenants love it. You know, it's a type of hands-on police work that's really, in a good positive way, that's really, really good. It builds rapport and law-abiding businesses. The Homeless to Work Program, great idea, great idea. Thanks for bringing that forth. Slurry seal, now that I'm driving again, boy, I'll tell you, our roads are bad, you know. That's mentioned many times. And I give a plug for something isn't in this report, but it's been around for a long time, a graffiti removal program. That's awesome, awesome. We had a pretty nasty graffiti done on our block wall the other day. A kid went right down the street in broad daylight, tagged a bunch of stuff. So, but it was gone within 24 hours. So they really jumped on it. But what I also want to do is really stress the importance of what I call abstracts in our efforts here. And some examples of these abstracts are, we just did the other day, the snow day and our holiday tree lighting program. Wonderful thing. Our Veterans Memorial Day seminars and celebrations, incredible. West Coast Slender Motorcycle Group coming through town. Great way to kick off summer and the holiday and patriotism. Our Fourth of July Parade Celebration, our incredible Wind Symphony Concerts, but I'll remind you, Thursday night, we got the first one. And it's a lot more than Christmas music. They gave an awesome job. Our Oktoberfest Cinema Cultura, a new one came up, came up, gangbusters, you know, Public Safety Day, Citizen of the Year dinners, things like that. These, they build community fabric, morale, and they can be an economic development recruiting tool. So, and many times, there's thousands of hours of volunteer labor put in these efforts here of very high-quality skilled labor that people put their soul into. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom. Next speaker is Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. I want to thank our City Manager, Michelle Dobson, for having that excitement when she gives that report. Because she's still with it. She's fired up. She made a commitment to the city of Moreno Valley and to the mayor and to the council members that she was gonna get this job done for the city and the residents. I came up, and I didn't, I signed my name at the last minute, but I came up because this is personal to me. Because I'm a pro developer, I mean development. I fight for jobs. And Roy Blecker said it well. Without development, without warehousing or hotels or Home Depot, Lowe's, things that are outside of the line where the taxes stay in our city. This is why I fight for development. This is why I love what Michelle and the staff does for the city of Moreno Valley. Because it's very important. Because without the first one out of the six, the other five will not come to exist. It takes money. Roy said it true. Nothing's free. And the only thing that I know that's free is the gospel. That's free. As long as nobody sticks out their hand and asks for anything. That's personal to me. Okay? But nothing's free. It costs money. And I want my staff to continue to communicate with the council and how we spend our money. Because they give direction in how we spend our money. And I'm only here, one out of a couple of hundred thousand people that live in the city, that looks at what we do in this city. I'm no longer afraid to voice my opinion. As long as it's for the good of our city and the residents. I do not get involved to make trouble. I only get involved for the greater good. That is my retirement. That's what I do. I don't go fishing and I don't go hunting. I look for jobs. And I thank Alan Block, Rick Zachamia, and Mike Lee. Because when I see these men in the planning commission, planning commissioners' meetings, and what they bring to the table, it excites them, the commissioners, and all those that pay attention. Because there's a lot of things that are coming to this city in 2018. Think about all the things that you see today in 2017. And it only gonna get better if we stick together and we fight for our things. This is what I like about this plan. And I thank the staff and I thank Michelle and I thank all of you, really.
Thank you Rafael. Thank you. Alright, and again, that was the last speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then this is just a receiving file. Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute restroom break and then we'll come back to G2. Thank you and welcome back to the City Council Meeting on December 5th, 2017. We're gonna go on to item G2, which is City Council Reorganization. And this year, we are selecting a Mayor Pro Tem. And I'm gonna go ahead and have a report from the city clerk, I guess, and city attorney? Or just city clerk? Okay. Because it says city attorney on here. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. The City Council rules and procedures provide that the City Council meet annually at its first meeting in December of each year to choose one of its members as Mayor Pro Tem. The rules also provide that the Mayor Pro Tem may be sworn in in the same meeting. Tonight, your rules and procedures provides that nominations for the Office of Mayor Pro Tem may be made by any member of the City Council and does not need to be seconded in order to be effective. Appointment shall be made by three or more affirmative votes on this motion to appoint. It is recommended that the council conduct the reorganization of the City Council by selecting one council member to serve a one-year term as Mayor Pro Tem. This concludes my report. I can answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions before we go to public comments? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes.
Just one?
No, we have six. First person, Frank Wright.
Okay.
Rafael Burguerras and Robert Harris.
Good evening Frank.
Sir.
Hey, good to see you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff. I understand this is an appointment for one of the councils to be able to speak for, or be a Pro Tem Mayor, but I'd like to speak on behalf of the existing Pro Tem Mayor, Vicky Baca. Is that permissible?
Yeah.
I'd like to, excuse me. I'd like to begin with Honorable Mayor Vicky Baca. And that she shows dedication to her responsibilities in all respects. She has very keen insight of the people of honest character. She can read people very well and she knows the people she can trust and rely on. And that's a good insight for a good councilman. She's devoted for the needs of the people in all efforts because she's dedicated to all the people for the city to unite together and being as one family, so to speak, as a whole group, council members and staff and everyone else. She is a very selective speaker. She speaks with dignity, with good procedure. She is very precise and she does not run off into rabbit trails that we often hear otherwise. But she is a good-sound speaker, come to the point, and says something briefly in short terms, which is very effective instead of rattling on. She is very formal in her approach to the public with right of assured self-respect and self-esteem. She is gracious a woman with fine character. For her upright actions, speak well of herself. For being a well, excuse me, admired woman and an honorable council member. It is imperative that she must maintain her position as Mayor Pro Tem for knowing her job so very well. Please, excuse my interruptions here. That's kind of medication I'm taking. But anyway, I'm saying that Vicky is the one that should stay in that job. And I'm sure there's other councils, Cabrera could be or otherwise. But I wanted to appreciate Vicky's responsibility, what she's done for us. She's in there. She fights for us. She's done right. In Navy terms, a fine woman, a fine officer. Thank you.
Okay, next three speakers are Rafael Burguerras, Robert Harris, and Bob Palomares.
Good evening once again, Mayor, council members, staff and guests. The first time I heard, or the first time I read the name Victoria Baca was in 2013 on the recall. That's when I saw the name. And then I heard the stories and I read about the stories. The one good thing about time, it does one or two things, either it can convict you or it will set you free. In this case, it set her free. Because we got to learn that people can lie about people. And that's a sad thing. Because Victoria Baca is nothing like that. She's a dedicated woman to the city and to this council. I know her personally. When we're done with the meetings, sometimes we have cake and coffee. I got to know her daughter, her granddaughter. You know, she's a personal woman. And what I like about Victoria, she's a strong woman, a woman of conviction, a woman that either tells you yea or nay. Now, those people don't like that. Tough luck. My mother was like that and I loved her, you know. So I would like to see Victoria one more year. She did a wonderful year.
I would like to see Victoria one more year. She did a wonderful year in 2017, when the mayor was not here, she took charge of the diocese and ran it well. She knew what she was doing for the city and for the residents. I would hope that this year, it would be a 5-0 vote. That would be nice, I don't know. But I know that Victoria is committed to the city of Moreno Valley, and she, once again, she will be a great pro temp. And I know she's responsible. Thank you, Victoria, for your hard work. And you know what? I'm glad you were. Thank you.
Okay, we have Robert Harris, followed by Bob Palomares and Tom Gerald.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff.
Welcome back, Robert.
Yeah, good to see you. Our citywide elected mayor, I believe, has the prerogative to make an appointment to this position as mayor pro temp. No? Why would that not be? Anyway, just, that's my feeling, if you make appointments to everything else, that you should also be able to appoint the mayor pro temp. And the way I look at this is that Ulysses, he's not quite ready. Doing a great job. David, doing a good job, not quite ready. And Victoria Baca has been doing a great job on the city council. She's always going to stand for progress for Moreno Valley, and she's going to, you know, make our city great in the future. I shouldn't use that word, great. Anyways. And Mr. Geiba, I don't feel that he has the temperament to be the mayor pro temp, although he has served in that position in the past. The first meeting that I attended with Mr. Geiba and a joint session with the school board, he was, all I can say is nasty, belligerent, and I was completely embarrassed by the way he acted at that school board meeting with the joint session. And so for that reason and a couple other reasons, I would not like to see Mr. Geiba as the mayor pro temp. He has a tendency, if he doesn't get his way, he'll storm out of a meeting. The one meeting that we had where he brought in a, somebody that he claimed wasn't a friend, but they attempted to privatize our storm drains, drains in Moreno Valley, it would have costed each parcel in Moreno Valley $488. And it could have gone as high as $1,000 a year if repairs were needed. And then the whole thing would be turned over to the Public Utilities Commission. And so, for those reasons, I don't think Mr. Geiba is a good choice for mayor pro temp. And I think Victoria Baca is right where she should be for, you know, another year, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. We have Bob Palomares, Tom Gerald and Leo Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Bob.
Mayor Pro Temp, council members. I'm also in favor of Victoria. They've already said everything I was going to say, but I know Victoria personally, and she's a hard worker. And I know that for a fact, that when people come to her and have a concern, she follows up. Even with businesses, she follows up. You know, she don't, okay, I'll, you know, I'll take care of it. No, no. She keeps in touch, and she's got good leadership skills. You know, everybody here that knows her knows what she's like. Don't take my word for it. Talk to her, and she'll show you exactly who she is. She's got great leadership skills, like I said, and she's got community support. And he should stay where she is, because she does a great job, you know? I know she works good with the mayor and council member Cabrera, and I'm sure she'd work with Mr. Marquez. But you know, you got to engage with her, you know? It's, this is a team effort here, just like with the staff. Look at all the great things they've done. It's because they get along, they work hard, they're committed, you know, like Rafael said, you know? They're the best, and you can be the best also. Sometimes we got to swallow our pride and work together. Say, you know, let's start a new year on the right foot and just move along. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Those kind words. Okay, we have Tom Gerald and Leo Gonzalez and Jose Chavez.
Tom Gerald, again, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Temp Baca, and council members, staff and the public. You know, we finally got around to looking at electing a popular elected mayor, which was so long overdue. One of the issues I had always brought forth, that I thought was incredibly important, is continuity of leadership. That is vitally, vitally important. And particularly, you know, we're not a city of 30,000 people anymore. We're 200,000 plus, you know, it's like the largest city in Riverside. And, you know, there's a lot of blue sky in front of us right now, as far as economic and industrial development, that I think could be, make this even a lot more dynamic city than we are at present. So, and, you know, a lot of recruiting of major businesses we hope to bring to this city. And I do know they look at that, at the continuity development. I've never been in favor of these one-year terms. You can't get anything done in a year. I mean, it's, the term ceremonial is true. Bluntly, I was in favor of a four-year term for the mayor, and I'd have no problem with any mayor pro temp doing a two-year term. I will say bluntly, I had no problems with Mr. Geiba's efforts. I thought he did a fine job as a mayor pro temp. But I do think we need to have continuity of leadership, you know, from this point forward. And I think it's very, very important. You know, consider the world we live in today. Not only we have the city of 200,000 people, which has enough headaches of its own day to day, but, you know, we got characters like Al Qaeda, ISIS, and even though they may be finished on the battlefield, you know, they're going elsewhere. We got lone wolf terrorists, you know, a lot of problems. We got crazy shooters like we had in Vegas, that, you know, are homegrown people, you know, bad stuff can happen. Now we got a little nutcase in Korea that's going to have maybe nuclear tipped missiles, you know, they can hit the continental United States. So, you know, I, you know, I want somebody with their track shoes on if and when it's needed, God forbid. But, you know, we want to be prepared. So, anyway, I'm very content that we continue with Mayor Pro Temp Baca. Thank you. Oh, and one last thing, too. I sat in a meeting with her a long time ago, when she first got elected to the council. It was with a volunteer, who was a little bit rambunctious, and had had some difficulties with staff. But I, man, I saw that, I was sitting in that meeting, abundantly fair, very intuitive, and, you know, kind of reading the tea leaves and, you know, and being fair to both sides. So, I took a good note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We have Leo Gonzalez, followed by Jose Chavez.
Good evening, council staff.
Good evening.
I will be brief. I've never sued anybody for plagiarizing my speeches, but I think I'm gonna go after Tom here, because he said exactly what I was gonna say. 100% in agreement with him. I think that, you know, appointments and such should be for longer terms. I mean, as far as mayor pro temp, it takes a year just to get your feet wet, I'm sure. And, you know, this constant change of leadership, and this person does that, and, you know, it doesn't, uniformity is pretty much the word I was going to use, is keep everything uniform for a while, so things get done, along with the mayor. Should be a four-year thing. Every two years, you're going to be campaigning for six months and six months. It just doesn't work that way. So, that's my two cents. I think it should stay with Mrs. Baca. She's done a great job this past year, and, you know, barely gotten her feet wet. And I'm looking forward, if she gets appointed, looking forward to what she has to offer for the residents during her next year. Thank you very much.
Jose Chavez, followed by Orlando Montero.
Yes, my name is Jose Chavez. I am agree with Tom's say. The city council Baca is doing a good job. I remember when she had those kind of problems regardless of the west Moreno Valley, yes, because they have a lot of bells stinking in there, and they don't want it, they don't like it. That's why they make a lot of political matters to kick them out. But it was, it's not right. It's something that should be not happened. But nobody likes when somebody comes to your home and put your blanket and get your feet with no cover on it. Nobody wants to do that. And regardless of Mr. Geiba, Mr. Geiba, I don't have nothing personal with you, honest with you, but that kind of attitude do you have anywhere you go, even if you would be a teenager or something like that, but with that kind of character, you know what I mean, you got to have problems anywhere. So you need to calm down, brother, and listen. I believe it never has been late to learn, never. I am 62 years old, but I still learn it every day. You can do it, boy. It's because that's nothing personal, you know, I believe in no one else, if they got to speak wrong for you, that's because, sorry, boy. It's the kind of things you showed to us last year, too, with the kind of attitude you stand up for the meetings and laughing like a little child, you know what I mean? You need to work it out, brother, by yourself. And you might be able to be a mayor, who knows? Hey, you are here in our city, who knows? But you got to work it out on yourself, to make improvements. But for this time, I give it the okay to Victoria Baca to stay to pro temp. And I hope for the next elections, we got to have an arbaleto. So, mayor and pro mayor, so don't be in this kind of situation like right now. I do believe as a professional way to do it, let the cities take the power to the people in the city, to be electing what they want, what we want. All right? Thanks so much, okay? You guys are doing a good job.
Have next speaker, last speaker is Orlando Montero.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, city council staff, I just want to advocate for Victoria Baca. I know her personally for many years now, and I'm a veteran, and I've seen what she does, the outreach she does for veterans, the work she does for my work with Wounded Warrior and some other veterans groups. And it's admirable to see what she does for the community. I'm glad to see her in the position she's in as mayor pro temp. I think she's doing a wonderful job. She's committed, she's dedicated. I have nothing against any of the other council members. I just think that she's where she needs to be, and I hope that she continues to be in that position. And I hope that as a council, that you all work together. I've been here for the last four or five meetings. I've been a member, a resident of Moreno Valley for 18 years. And only in the last four or five months, I started attending the city council meetings. And I've seen some controversy between you. And I think that keep the city's best interest in mind, work together, put personal issues aside, and do what's best for our community. That's all we want from you, and that's the reason you're there. And I think where she's at right now, Victoria Baca, needs to continue being in that position, because I like what I've seen so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Orlando. Any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
One more speaker.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and close public comments. And we'll have Councilmember Cabrera on here first.
Thank you. Pretty much, I just, I would like to...
I was going to say that we're in the deliberation part, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to reciprocate various comments that were made by the public. I believe the current mayor pro temp Baca, someone used the word "strong." I think that's a very accurate word, you know, in the very short period of time that I've been here. What I've seen, she is very strong and firm, and she's done a very good job. And the public said, said everything, you know, the public has spoken, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. I've gotten a chance to know David Marquez for this whole entire year. He's been working very tirelessly for this city. He's attended almost every function that I've ever even seen on our calendars. Additionally, has a tremendous amount of respect as shown to him by his community and the residents, having lived here for so long as well, and being a veteran, and attending many. I don't think he's missed any of the veterans, ribbon cuttings over at the base, anything. He's been very supportive of our veterans in the military and March Air Reserve Base. I think he's a remarkable person. I think he's got a good temperament. I think he's well-versed in this city's needs, and he'd make an excellent mayor pro temp.
And then I'll just make some comments as well. I think with the new mayor position, you know, it's important to have the mayor pro temp, whoever's the mayor pro temp, to share, have a shared vision of, you know, where we're going with the city. And I believe that Victoria and I, we have a shared vision. In fact, in the past year, we've been able to accomplish a lot, along with the entire council. And so, I would recommend and suggest that we continue to support Victoria for the position of mayor pro temp.
All right, I'm going to open to nominations.
I would like to nominate Victoria Baca for another term as mayor pro temp.
And then council member, but, and there's no second needed. There's no second needed. Councilmember Geiba?
Yeah, my nomination would be for David Marquez.
All right, let's go ahead and, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp and council members, I think by motion, you would act on each nomination as they would present it. The first one that gets three votes prevails.
Oh, okay, so just do one each. Okay. All right, so, so he made a motion, Councilmember Cabrera made a motion for Victoria Baca. There's no second.
And there was a nomination. We would now need a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Okay, so...
Or, I'm sorry, we would simply need a vote at this point in time, on the nomination, right?
Yes, yeah, just vote. Okay, so you want to do a voice vote?
Yes, please. Councilmember Geiba?
No.
Councilmember Marquez? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2.
So it passes 3-2, and I believe the rules say that she could be sworn in?
At this meeting, that's correct.
This meeting? Okay, so if she is prepared, would you like to be sworn in tonight? Okay, so Madam Clerk, do you want to do the swearing in, or who would you like to do the swearing in? Okay, Pat's fine, okay.
Use your hand, your right hand. Repeat after me. I?
I.
Victoria Baca?
Victoria Baca.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of eva- Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will?
And that I will?
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Upon which?
Upon which?
I am about to enter?
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You have a few words you'd like to?
Well, first of all, I wasn't prepared for this, but I want to say thank you so much for the community support. I want to thank my mayor and my councilman, Elise Cabrera, for their vote and their confidence in electing me for a second term of Mayor Pro Tem. And I'll do my best as always. And my door is open, and I'm here for you, for the citizens of Moreno Valley, the staff, and anyone else that needs assistance here in the beautiful and great city of Moreno Valley. Thank you.
We're going to go to reports, city council reports. The first one is for the Joint Powers Commission. Just providing an update from the recent March Joint Powers Commission, held on November eighth. In that meeting, the commission amended the March JPA's Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, the TUMF ordinance to adopt WRCOG's revised fee schedule. Excuse me, they also approved zoning for the West Meridian Lower Plateau Project, which will be developed north and south of an extension for Cactus that goes west toward Riverside. It's primarily industrial with some business park and a small amount of mixed use. That concludes my report of the last week's March Joint Powers Commission. The next one is Riverside County Habitat of Conservation Agency, which is Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. The kangaroo, stiffened kangaroo rat is still being talked about here in Moreno Valley. The funds that Moreno Valley has received from developers have been forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty percent, or over twenty percent of the collected fees for this species. The Board of Educate, or Board, the Board of this agency has approved agreement for the Southern California Edison to work with the county to, and a lot of people aren't going to understand this, it's called a sub-transportation project. And what this project is, is that Southern California Edison supposedly will not develop around these habitats, their locations. And the cities that are part of this is Medellin, Marietta, Temecula, and Southern, Western Riverside County. This little, I don't know if you've people seen these little rats, or, I call them a rat. They look like a rat, but they're a, they're a little kangaroo. And when you develop an area, you see them running all over the place. And people say, well, can we spend so much money on this rat? It's extinct, it hasn't been extinct yet, but it will if it continues at this rate where we're, we're not taking care of them. Secondly, the board had talked, and this is another one I still don't understand. It's called stink net. This is a weed that is not known for this area, but for some reason, somebody, I guess, brought this weed. And I'm not talking about what you smoke. It's a weed what you see on the streets, like tumbleweed. Somebody planted one in this area, and it grew out, and it's all over the place now. Well, they want to preserve this plant or this weed. So Riverside County have plans to manage this weed out in this, in the county. So that's all I have on that. Thank you. I know.
Okay. Riverside County Transportation Commission, Mayor Pro Tem, Baca?
Thank you. The Riverside County Transportation Commission report is as follows. The Paris Valley Line is a twenty-four mile extension of the ninety-one line MetroLink service that began operating in June two thousand sixteen. The Paris Valley Line has four stations, the Riverside Hunter Park Station, Moreno Valley March Field Station, the Paris Downtown, and Paris South. During the initial planning of the Paris Valley Line platform, canopies were considered, but not constructed due to the cost. Using grant funds, RCTC is now able to install the canopies, and there's seven of them, including wind screens initially planned for this project. Look for the work to begin next week, or, I'm sorry, next year, almost next, next week. Also, MetroLink is offering special service to all Rams home games. So go Rams, at Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. The round trip train tickets are only ten dollars, and most MetroLink stations do not charge for parking. Once you get there, MetroLink is offering service on the Antelope Valley, San Bernardino, Orange County, and ninety-one Paris Valley Lines to and from the games. Fans can take the MetroLink to Union Station in downtown Los Angeles for a short subway ride to the Coliseum. And let's see what else. So you have a short ride on the subway to Seventh and Metro Station to catch the Expo Light Rail line for a quick ride to the Coliseum. And this is at no additional cost. So save your gas, it's very expensive, prevent smog, and take the MetroLink. Thank you.
We have Riverside Transit Agency, RTA, Councilmember Marquez.
Okay, on a better note. Once again, RTA is offering a youth fair during the winter break. From December fifteenth through January seventh, RTA will give a discount to students in the grades of one to twelve, where they can ride the bus for only twenty-five cents. This fair promotion is good for any fixed route, including commuter links, and all they have to do is show their ID. RTA will adjust various routes to improve connections, on-time performances, and service. Route nineteen, which is one of the main routes in Moreno Valley, they will be running from Moreno Valley through Paris on a fifteen-minute interval. So they're going to be quite a bit going through here in Moreno Valley. So if you need to go to Paris, take the bus. The commuter link, which is a, it's a red and white bus, if you see it out there, it's Route two hundred. January fourteenth, they are going to introduce a new service to Moreno Valley, which connects San Bernardino, Riverside, and with service connecting to, and you're going to like this, Disney Resort in Anaheim. So if you want to go to Disneyland, take the bus. You can't beat that. Look for more details on Riverside Transit com and for the new ride guides for the outstanding, for the remaining of December. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. The next one is the Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG. I'll go ahead and present that report for the December fourth, two thousand seventeen meeting. The executive committee allocated one point four million dollars through two rounds of beyond funding. This includes actually what we had already accepted, the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the Community Enhancement Program in Moreno Valley. And I believe it was the last council meeting or two council meetings before we approved that to fund various citywide projects, enhancing a community cleanup event, exercise equipment along the Juan Bautista de Anta Trail, and a general plan, healthy community element, health assessment. Also, they looked at the Clean Cities Coalition. The Clean Cities Coalition recently nominated Eric Lewis, City of Moreno Valley Transportation Division Manager and City Engineer, as the Chair of the Coalition. So if Eric's here, is he here? No, okay. But congratulations to Eric. In partnership with the City of Moreno Valley, the Coalition is planning a regional transportation summit on January two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, to be held at the Moreno Valley Conference and Recreation Center. The executive committee approved two TUMF agreements for the Heacock Street Widening Project. This includes six hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the planning engineering phases and three hundred and eleven thousand for the right-of-way phase of the widening project. That concludes my report. We have Western Riverside Council Regional Conservation Authority, Councilmember Guyba.
Or short RCA. So, yeah, that was just this week, on Monday, actually, yesterday. And we've selected a new Chair for that. The Honorable Marion Ashley had been the Chair for the past year. The Vice Chair was Jonathan Ingram's. Now he is the Chair. We've also, the Vice Chair came, I forgot her name, but she's from Temecula. You probably know her, don't you, Michelle? Annalee or something like that?
Mary Ann Edwards?
Yeah, Mary Ann Edwards, thank you. She was the selected Vice Chair. And then they selected two executive staffs. One of them was Jeff Hewitt out of Cala Mesa. And the other one, I didn't have the name written down, so I couldn't remember that one. We have, we had a closed meeting where we accepted three pieces of property into the system. We also closed the meeting in honor of Mayor Bush, who had just passed away. And that's a request I'd like to make, if I may, if we can adjourn this meeting in memory of Mayor Darrell Bush, who was very, seventeen years with the City of Paris on JPA, Regional RCTC, RTA, very well-loved man. So if you would like to do that, I'd appreciate it. And then the last comment here I'll have is that we did have an audit, and the audit went clean and unmodified. It was a good audit, and everything came out generally accepted accounting principles and the highest designated auditors can provide. So that's the RCA.
Thank you, Councilmember Guyba, and I think the next one's yours. Go ahead, Southern California Association of Governments.
Oh, yeah, I know, no school district joint task force. There's a lot of things going on. And by the way, Michelle, when you have some needs for me to talk to a son or something about, I can help interface, and sometimes that gets done quicker. I think we got, if I remember correctly, we got a letter from SCAG immediately on the sixty freeway corridor, from SCAG immediately after I brought it and handed to them. And I said, we want you to help us. So I try to represent you as best I can on that one. I went to the economic summit, two days of that, and it was a very, very good opportunity. I'm having a SCAG report being made right now, so most of this stuff will be in that report that you can get if you request it from my office or from Angel or any of my assistants. Twelve fourteen, the fourteenth of this month, I go to SCAG this Thursday. So there'll be more information to pass on. But on the fourteenth, we move into our new digs. We'll no longer be on Seventh Street, but we'll be right across Catty Cornered, where the new, the new tower was built. What is it? Korean air tower, they call it. It's like way up there, it's the glass tower. So we move in there on the fourteenth. We'll have our first official meeting there in January. So that'll be kind of a neat little thing. Went on my last of the big data, open data in the Arts District. And while they had locomotion going there, so I got a chance to drive around. And, well, I didn't do the driving, but the autonomous vehicle did the driving. So we went around the track with the autonomous vehicle and saw a lot of different types of vehicles that are being made and created. And we're about ready to start next year on putting together the plan for the open data, big data piece. So I'll report back more on that later. Thank you very much.
City managers' report?
No report. I was going to introduce our new Public Works Director, but you've already done that, Mayor.
But you want to maybe provide some, his background or?
Sure, I'd love to. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Michael Wolf comes to us after four years as the Director of Public Works, City Engineer at the City of Yorba Linda. Prior to that, he was the Deputy Director of Public Works for the City of Orange. He's also done construction management in the private sector. He is a veteran, serving nine years in the United States Navy as an officer assigned to the Engineer Corps. We're just thrilled to have him. He's knowledgeable, he has a real heart for the employees as well. I believe this week, he's going to be out driving a street sweeper, so you might want to look out for that as well. So we're just delighted to introduce Michael Wolf to Team Oval. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you. And congratulations again, Michael.
Is he an Angel fan? I mean, he's from Orange County. Are you an Angel fan, Mike?
I missed that on his application.
We have City Attorney's report?
Thank you, Mayor, nothing tonight.
All right, we'll go ahead. This brings us to reports and comments from councilmembers who did not speak earlier. And we'll go ahead and start off with Councilmember Guyba. And then, do you want to go? Yeah, okay, okay.
Just, just real quick, I don't want to add anything more, but once again, I'd like to ask if we can close the meeting. I had, I had the opportunity, sitting with Darrell on the JPA. And when he was the Chair and I was the Vice Chair, we took trips to Washington together. He was really a pretty amazing man. He was very good and a good mentor to me. And it was very, it's a sad loss. His son Barry Bush works for Ashley's office. And oftentimes, I'd run into Barry and say, how's your dad doing? Because he lost the election, seventeen years as the mayor. And he said, oh, mom's got him doing this, and mom's got him doing that. So it was, sounded like he was having a happy time. So it was kind of unexpected that we lost him. But he was, he's well-loved by all those he worked with. And I really respected the man, and we had a good relationship, so thank you.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to close it with two memories? Can that be done?
Generally, generally, it's just one, because you put more emphasis, but, I mean, we could do that.
Just past week or so, we had a, Ms. Barbara Johnson is the spouse of CJ, or Cleveland Johnson, our Moreno Valley Unified School District trustee, president. I just wanted to also close this meeting in memory of her, Barbara Johnson. Secondly, I just want to put out there to the public, because I know how rumors get started. For the next week or so, I'm going to only be available by phone to the staff only. There are some personal matters that have to be taken. I will not be discussing this with anyone other than our staff. So if the public needs to get a hold of me, go through the office, Angel, Vivette, Ray Dean, Renee, would be glad to take messages. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that, you know, again, rumors start that for some reason or another, I'm not around, I'm not showing my face. It's for personal reasons, and I would like to keep that at personal and private. Again, please, just bear me that privacy for the next week or so. Thank you. Went to the lighting of the Christmas tree. I guess it, I mean, I enjoyed myself. My granddaughter thought it was, I mean, she wanted to go. She was there last year. And I want to thank staff for setting us in an area where she wouldn't get stuck again, like we did last year, where she got stuck on a power cord, and it took about five people to move that wheelchair. But they situated us in a corner there, which my granddaughter was very, very happy. I think it was, it was awesome ceremony, Santa Claus rolling around. Now, I don't know who Santa Claus was, but I think I would have been a better Santa Claus than whoever he was. But that was a great, and I look forward to next year, and the next year, and next year after that, as we have that ceremonies. I know someone brought up about a fees for the snow. I don't know who brought that up, whose idea that was. But I will say one thing, I hope in the future that we don't charge for that. I think it's a city event that we shouldn't charge. That's just my personal opinion. I think that the city can do, can do pretty good without charging six dollars for, or make a couple of thousand dollars here or there. But I hope we don't do that. But I hope we don't do that in the next couple of years, or at all, period, in the future. Other than that, I'll see everybody back in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Cabrera for his closing comments.
Yes, just a few points here. The City Manager already updated us on the Homeless to Work. I've been constantly asking about that. I'm very glad to hear that we finally got the funding for that. So that, together with the Adopt a Street, Adopt a Neighborhood, the city staff has been working very diligently on to get done. I'm just glad to see that it's finally happening. We'll be able to clean up the city. It'll look a lot different in the coming year. Let's see. Just FYI for everyone out there, there's a new IHOP open on Iris and Paris, brand new. Thank you, Economic Development, and everyone else involved for bringing them out. Very nice restaurant, if you want to go check that out. Next Tuesday, for everyone out there, we have a study session. We're gonna be talking about food trucks here in the city. I grew up in LA around food trucks as a kid, and I have a lot of ideas for that. So I've been talking with staff, and I'll be bringing those up next Tuesday. Let's see. Next, the library, the new branch library opening in the mall. I mean, we've been waiting for that for a long time. I'm very happy to see that it's gonna open on the twenty-first of this month. I've been telling as many people as I can, specifically the youth, all throughout the city, because we just concluded the high school tour. The Emerging Leaders Council just concluded our tour of the high schools here in the city. And we were asking them two questions. What do you love about Moreno Valley, and what would you change about Moreno Valley? And so us, as young people as well, were able to easily connect with these high school kids. And so they interacted with us, and we got to hear what they have to say. We listened to them. And I think that's important, you know, having a conversation with someone, you know. Humans are not meant to be alone or isolated. We're meant to have companionship, and to share, share thoughts and ideas and conversations with others amongst us. And so the high school visit gave that opportunity to these high school kids. And so I've been telling all of them about the library opening, and hopefully, pretty soon, I'll be able to visit the elementary schools as well. I want to visit elementary schools and read books to them, or something. So I'll be talking with staff about that pretty soon, and hopefully, we could work on scheduling that. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you again to the staff for all your hard work, and I'll see you again next Tuesday.
We have Mayor Protem Victoria Vaca.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to bring forward. First of all, I'm asking staff to assist with our Jazz Festival that's scheduled for May two thousand and eighteen. And when I say assist, I mean, similar to the Latino Film Festival, which was very successful and well-attended. So I believe that it's gonna be held at Moreno Valley High School, but we'll have more details to come. But if you need any more information, I'll be forwarding that to you. Number two is I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring a proposal forward to consolidate the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Trails Commission, adding a healthy component to that.
To the extent that that item, that Mayor Protem is requesting that item be placed on the agenda, we need?
December nineteenth.
On the December nineteenth. We need three affirmative, two other council members to agree to that, and it will be placed on the agenda.
I don't see an issue with that, to have it on the agenda.
That's fine with me.
Do you need a vote, or do you need a second, or is that fine?
That, and we have three at least, and the other ones wish to speak as well.
Yeah, you have consensus there.
Okay.
Or at least a majority.
Third, I would like to make a motion to make a policy revision, or direct staff to make a policy revision, to reduce the number of days to post our agenda from twelve days to three days in compliance with the Brown Act.
Same thing?
Same process. Is there a specific meeting that you'd like to see?
On December nineteenth.
I don't have a problem with that, to have it on the December nineteenth meeting.
And just to clarify here, I want to make sure I'm understanding. So Mayor Protem is requesting December nineteenth, so we will, that'll come back on the agenda for our discussion, and then what happens after that?
You adopt your policies by resolution. It would be a change in one of your policies, which provides for a twelve-day posting period. We would rewrite that to provide for a seventy-two-hour period, and then the council, as a body, could take action on that on the nineteenth, either approve it or not. Today, we're simply looking for consensus to place it on the agenda.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then fourth, in promoting the World Logistics Center, I'm making a motion that we also place on the December nineteenth calendar the process and to rename Theodore Street to World Logistics Parkway. And that would be for the December nineteenth calendar as well. Begin the process.
You have something?
I'm sorry.
You need clarification.
Yes, do you want, is your expectation that we would have all of the research and everything ready for action on the nineteenth? Or just information?
Just the information on what the process would be, and for us to take action, to direct you, to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe that could be in the City Manager's Report in Item H. We could just, you know, like as a little report, you can just give a little report.
If the Mayor Protem's desire is to give direction at the nineteenth, then we should probably just do it on business. And we'll do a staff report.
Yes.
If you want to take some action.
Yes, and I need support for that.
Okay. So you want to have two, there's gonna be then two separate meetings?
Yes.
That's what you want?
December nineteenth, we'll start the process.
The process, as I recall, includes the Ecology and Historical Commission. So they would, we'd forward this to them, I think, and I'll have to look that up in detail. But that's why on the nineteenth, we'll give you the process. And then their recommendation comes to the council for final action at some point in time.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, to start the process, or to start the discussion. Okay. All right, so it's, any other?
You want more? I'm just kidding. No, that was, those were the four items. Those were the four items, and I also want to say, once again, thank you to the community for coming out to recommend to the city council to give me a second year as your Mayor Protem. And I'm very honored and humbled. Thank you.
And I'll just make my comments brief here. To begin with, I just want to congratulate Victoria again for being selected as the, not the new, but to continue as the Mayor Protem. She's done an excellent job in the year two thousand and seventeen. Again, we have that shared vision, which I think is important when you have a citywide elected mayor in moving the city forward. You know, that both of you have that type of vision of where we want to see the city go. In addition to that, I just want to congratulate the Valley View High School against CIF water polo team. They did an excellent, excellent job in winning and beating Beverly Hills High School. And like I mentioned, they did have a pool. Beverly Hills High School had a pool, and Valley View didn't for a very long time. So they were only able to train two days out of the week, whereas other water polo teams were able to train each and every day. So congratulations again to Valley View. They made history for the City of Moreno Valley. I also want to thank the staff as well for the holiday tree lighting ceremony. Some of you may know, I was able to facilitate the ceremony, and it was really a great, great event. I want to thank Tim Carroll. I know, I think he's probably somewhere in the back. But he did a lot of work, you know, and actually, a lot of everybody did, the parks, you know, Mel, everyone, Kevin, you know, Tom, Michelle, you know, everyone. Everyone did a lot of work to make it a very great event. And I think it's getting, it's getting better every year. So last year, there was a little issue with the sound system. It wasn't that loud, and this year, it was just nice, crystal clear. So it's getting a lot better. And then the Santa, we had Santa's Village, Snow Day, and then we had a little event with Santa Claus. So that was pretty cool. I also want to thank the City Manager for giving us a regularly-scheduled strategic plan update for Momentum Mowal. I think it's important that we have those, so that way the public knows, and us as a council know where our vision is, you know, and where we're going, and how staff is actually implementing that vision. So I think that's really important, that we see that. And, you know, let's continue to meet those timelines. I believe it was like ninety-five percent accomplished for the first year. So, you know, we still got a lot more, and I know that we can do it, so let's continue. And I also want to just say, let me see here, what was the other one? Okay. So I wanted to mention, these are kind of like my, some requests, I guess you could say. But one of them is that we continue to promote, you know, as a city, and this also involves the public too. We have Adopt a Neighborhood Program. We have Adopt a Street and Sponsor Street Program. So I'd like us to really adopt that. And really, wherever we go, the events that we do, hey, you know, remind people that we can Adopt a Street. We can Adopt a Neighborhood. I know we're already doing it, but I just want to see us really embrace it, you know, even more, you know, in almost everything that we do. And I think we can probably get even more people to join. And the whole vision behind that, or the purpose, is that if we get more people, or more organizations, churches, to adopt certain areas, we can make our city even better. The second request, actually, I want to commend Councilmember Cabrera for going out to the high schools. But also, one of the things that we heard from the high schools, and we have petitions, so I want to find out, and Pat, if you don't have the, that's fine, you know, maybe you can do some more research just to have the, how many signatures we have and all of that. But I want to see, you know, the status of that, you know, and maybe a, coming to, you know, another council meeting, you know, when we can get that going for the students. Basically, the students requested a skate park. And so, you know, they had petitions signed and everything like that, and I don't want that to go into a black hole. You know, I wanted us to, you know, have a discussion about it, and see what the costs are, and then see where we can maybe put one. I think if there's that many residents and that many students that really want something like that, you know, I think we should do it. The other thing, the other one, area that I have a request on is for us to have a strategy or a plan of financing options for the proposed town center. And I know that we're doing, we have a SCAG report, well, not a SCAG report, a SCAG grant that's studying that Nason Street area, the corridor there. But I'd like us to kind of, just kind of get going as far as, you know, what are some financing options? I've been to some conferences before, and some of the things that other cities are doing, and they're really going aggressive on this. They're doing bids, business innovation districts. So they'll actually map out an area, and they'll say, "Okay, this is the area that we want, the town center, or the new library, or the new area," and then they'll do a bond. But the people don't pay for the bond. It's actually the businesses that go there, the new businesses that go there, that end up paying for all of that development. So I'd like us to have some options, maybe even at a study session. And because there's other, there's other ways as well. There's the P3s, the public-private partnerships, and I know Councilmember Guyba has a lot of experience with that. But, you know, we could do those as well, and there's different options. And I know we've talked about it before, but I kind of want to see us make sure that we have a study session and a schedule, you know, that we're going there. And that's it. The only main thing I just wanted to do was just close in memory of, again, Darrell Bush. You know, I knew him as well. He was the mayor of Paris for seventeen years, very long time. And then also, in memory of Barbara Johnson, which was President CJ Johnson's wife that recently passed away. Thank you.